I moved to accept.
I second the motion.
Thank you. And any, any comments, comments? Nope. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you. And did you receive the treasurer's report today? I had emailed it out earlier with the agenda and the minutes. I thought that Shar would be here to explain it, but she did say to me in an email, she told me in an email that the three grants that we awarded in February, $350 to Barker Middle School for the STEM Conference, and they did spend that, you know, they went, that was like the following weekend, and they sent us pictures and things. And then Kayla Vasilko for the Trailblazing Woman Research for $500. She had, oh, maybe Shar said she spent that now. She wrote to us saying that she was not able to track-
I can't do NAACP.
Pardon?
No, I'm sorry. Something else. Let me, let me move right now.
Oh, okay. And I believe that Shar said that she has spent that now. And I did speak to Jerry Jones recently about Soul Steppers, and she said, you know, they had to cancel all of their events, and so they have not yet spent all of their money, but they have plans to yet, to do that this summer. So, so we had dispersed, and then we gave a, an advance payment to The Nest to pay for all of the food and craft supplies that we needed for the four events that we had scheduled at The Nest in March. And she did spend the entire 400, but of course, we have a lot of stuff left over to carry over. So our current balance now is 19,737.51. We still owe Joanne $64.20, and that, we're trying to figure out where that comes from, because that could come out of the Main Street grant, but there's a freeze on funds now for the city. And so we're still working on that, Joanne. I'm sorry you've had to wait so long.
Well, I'll skip dinner again tonight. It's all right.
Oh, okay. Well, we apologize for all those dinners you've had to skip since then. And actually, we do have some income coming in, because some of us showed up at Barker Mansion in March to help with the two events that they had. They had one that was called the Wild Women and Wine, and Nicole and Joanne and I were at that one. And then we, and we get 50% of the proceeds. Well, and then the same with the following week. They had another event about the history of feminism through the eyes of Barker Mansion. So we get half of the proceeds from that tour also, but they, you know, they ordered clothes a matter of days after this happened, and they haven't even calculated how much we get it. But once we get it, maybe we'll get it. I don't know about the frozen funds for the city, but we'll eventually get that. And that's going to offset some of what, some of the expenses we had at The Nest. So that's all I can say. So our balance now, 19,737.51. And next thing on the agenda, we have, well, as you probably all know, Dalia Ziegus was elected in-
Excuse me, Bonnie. Don't we usually vote on the treasurer's report to accept?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Are there any-
I move to accept the treasurer's report.
I second it.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. And then moving on, next thing on the agenda is the election, well, the election of vice president, because Dalia Ziegus had to step down, because she was elected by caucus to the city council. And so we need to replace her as vice president. And I do want to read you, I found the, I don't know if I could find it now, standard operating procedures for the, this commission. And the vice chair, according to that, the duties of the vice chair is to run meetings in the chair's absence and to cover the treasurer reports if the treasurer is absent at the meeting. So it's not a whole lot of responsibility, but is anyone present now interested in, in filling this position? Christina, were you thinking about it, or? You don't have to, but I mean, but is there anyone else? Fay or Joanne, if Christina doesn't want to?
I believe my term ends pretty soon. I have to check that again. But I think my term ends before this year is out.
Oh, really? Oh, okay. I don't have that in front of me, so I-
I don't either. I meant to check it before this meeting, because I knew that was going to come up. But I didn't have a chance to.
Are you on May-
But I'm thinking it's August, but I can't promise. I don't know for sure. So I don't want to do it at this time. Maybe we can table it for the next meeting, since we should be in person next month. Can we do that?
Yeah. Christina, do you want to, or do you want to hold off on that?
What are we missing from our meeting today? How many women are on the commission?
Shar, Charlene, and Albertine, and Veronica.
And we're trying to fill another position.
No. Yeah.
We have a potential appointee.
Yes, we do. And in fact, Joanne, I found out that the person who you thought had applied, she had applied, she has a different last name now. So they finally figured out that-
Oh, that was the problem.
Yeah, that's the application they had was for, with a different last name, though.
I see.
So, yeah, so I believe that we will be getting a new commissioner appointed by the mayor soon to replace, to replace Dalia. So should we wait until the next meeting? We're going to be meeting in person next month. Would that be a better time to elect the vice president?
I just need a little time to think about that.
Okay.
So next session, I would be able to give you-
Yeah, the next meeting then, and maybe more people will be at the meeting too. So, yep. Okay, we can do that. Kay- Caleb, Janet Black has not yet joined the meeting, has she? She was going to join on at 5:15. Let me see if anybody else-
Yeah, 5:15.
Is listed here. Nope, she's not on yet. Well, okay, well then we may as well move on to the next thing.
Bonnie, excuse me a minute. Joanne, may I just that one of us contact Tiny and find out if she's going to be continuing?
Yes. Who, who wants to do that? I can do that if nobody else wants to, but if anyone feels they know her better than, than I do-
I'll be glad to call her.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joanne. I know we, this is something, we don't see her very often, so this is-
And she's just about a neighbor of mine. She's just on the next block.
Yeah. Okay, good. Oh, thank you. Yeah, that would be good. Okay, so talked about, I told you about Barker Mansion. Women's History Month events, boy, that was a bummer because of COVID. Well, a lot of things were, but that was what the things were. We did meet on March 8th, which was International Women's Day, to make tributes to women in the suffrage movement. And this meeting was at The Nest. We did make sashes and pins for fundraiser. We spent a lot of money, almost $300 on food, but the food that Esther had bought was for all four days. She bought it at Costco. And we had four events planned, so there was enough food, you know, cookies and things that could, you know, that would last from week to week. So we have to figure out what to do about that, but of course, we know nothing right now about a month from now or two months from now. We just don't know. So hopefully, next month, we can decide what we are going to do about that. So that's all I can say. And the Women's Equality Day events kind of, it kind of moves right into that. We were hoping to, the, the Women's Commission has had, every year we've had a luncheon, a very elegant luncheon with a wonderful speaker. And we had that lined up to have at Lebesnik Center the first week in September, which is when we always do it. And we did not yet have the speaker lined up. It was a matter of days before I was contacting the speaker when COVID happened, so, excuse me. So we don't have anything planned at all at this moment for that. And another thing that happened about, about Women's Equality Day, or, or about the celebration of the Centennial of Suffrage, we were going to have a speaker at Michigan City Public Library. In fact, Robin Cohen at the library had written a grant to pay for the speaker. She was speaking, she was supposed to speak on March 21st, and of course, she had to cancel that. She, the speaker, Janine Drake, is a professor at Indiana University in Bloomington. And even before the library canceled, or we canceled, Indiana University canceled it. So, you know, maybe she'll be available, that she could speak if we can have a dinner in September. But we just don't know anything right now, but we'll keep all of that on the burner and see, on the back burner, and see if we can figure out next month what to do. And so the one event left that we could, I think, safely do for Women's Equality Day in August is to obtain a resolution from our city council and a proclamation from our mayor recognizing the Centennial. And, but I do know that the League of Women Voters was also planning to do that. They did that earlier this year to commemorate the anniversary, the 100-year anniversary of the founding of League of Women Voters. And they went to the county, county council, the mayor of La Porte, the, you know, Long Beach and Westville Town Councils, all over the county that covered. So all we need to cover is the city, city council and the mayor. But do you want to agree to do that jointly with the League of Women Voters or any other women's organizations that are thinking the same thing? Do you want to do that jointly with them? Seek a resolution?
May I speak for the League, or would you prefer I not at this point?
Yeah, but first we could decide, because if we don't, if nobody here wants to do it jointly with the League, then we don't approach the League about it, I guess. So what do you think? And the way we do it, well, the League went through it, and Joanne and I were very involved in it in February, so we know the process, but, but the mayor will come to a meeting. Maybe he would come to our meeting and read the proclamation that he proclaims this, you know, August 26th to be a day to commemorate. And the same with the city council, the resolution they would do.
May I just point out that it really went extremely smoothly. Everybody was very cooperative. Anybody that we contacted was very eager to have us involved. And, and it was fun going from place to place.
It really was. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it really was. And we've talked about this at several of our meetings. You know, I've just mentioned it in passing, and Sean Fitzpatrick, our city council liaison, has always been very supportive of it. And I asked him if he would introduce it in, at a meeting. Well, the city council does not have any meetings scheduled at the moment, so I don't know when it will be, but do you want to pursue getting a resolution and a proclamation for Women's Equality Day, August 26th?
I mean, I don't see what it would hurt. I feel like if other cities are doing it, the ours should.
Yeah. 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 It wouldn't hurt, it won't hurt anything. It will be, it will get, you know, some information about, about suffrage, about the, about the 19th Amendment ratification. We'll get some of that information into the newspaper probably, and, you know, out to the public that way, since we're missing so many other plans that we had for doing that. So, you know, okay, so should I-
I think it seems like a good idea to partner.
Yes, Christina?
I think it seems like a good idea to partner and to bring awareness and-
Okay. I'd be happy to work on it. And is it okay if we would do this jointly with the League or anybody else, if they want to do it jointly with us?
Yeah, I would say so. I like when organizations work together.
Yeah, okay. Well, then, yeah, even Human Rights Commission might be interested in doing this. Is there anybody else that anyone can think of that we should approach to do this? Okay. Well, if, if I think of anyone, I'm, I'm willing to write the resolution or work on it, the resolution and the proclamation. So if I come up with any other organizations, if I'm talking to anybody or something, I'll just email everybody and we can go from there. But I will try to find, I will try to find other organizations, specifically League of Women Voters, to do that. And I'm looking for Janet. Again, Janet, hey, you're there. Okay. Well, Janet, I'm glad you're here. I hope you weren't sitting there waiting for the last 15 minutes, because we were looking for you and didn't know how to find you. So, so-
Bonnie, before you move on, Bonnie, the city council, Gail just sent out their schedule. They're going to be back on track July 7th and July 21st.
Oh, okay.
They're going to be back on track at Krieger.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you, Fay. Thank you. Well, we're going to welcome Janet Black here today with us. She's the executive director of Lebesnik Center for the Arts. There are only five people at this meeting, Janet, besides you. It's me and Joanne. I know you know Joanne. Christina Isabel, do you know?
Yes, I know you all. There's six. There's Fay and Nicole. Oh, yeah, and me. I'm sorry. I'm the-
Yes.
No, who's Caleb? There's a-
Coleman and Fay, Fay Moore. So thank you very much for joining us today.
Absolutely. Thank, thank you, guys. Your money is getting put to use, so.
Good. What are you doing with our money? Do you know?
Yeah, I sure do. Well, first of all, thanks for having me, and I'm excited to report. It's nice to see people, first off. Yeah, we've been doing a lot. We, we are going forward, of course, with the exhibit, despite some of the things that have been going on. We, we are opening it a little later than we had intended, because we were going to open it, you know, mid-June. And now we're opening it July 3rd, which feels pretty fitting for, you know, Independence Day. So we have a great, we have great stuff coming. And of course, a lot of your money has been used towards shipping and, but also, as promised, ads. You're going to see a Beecher ad very soon. You're going to be, when you come to the exhibit, you'll also be recognized. There's going to be a huge vinyl in our lobby. This is, let me just show you, if you haven't gotten your cards, because I would love to drop them somewhere. So we kind of have this very cool logo that we made for the event. And this is not how your money was used, but we are also, but we are creating bags and t-shirts, just so you know. But you are recognized on the foot. If you, we could figure out how to get you like a stack, so that, most of you should be on our mailing, but I can't guarantee that everybody got a card, but we have lots of them. We also took, yeah, there you go. We also took an ad where your men, where you have your recognition in Lake Life, which is one of these, you know, they kind of go to the beach people, but the ad is on the back cover when you're on there. We will also be doing some WBEZ ads, and like I said, you should see the Beecher ads. So in addition, the, you know, we're, we're going to open on July 3rd, and due to the COVID situation, where I was a little concerned that we would have like hundreds of people at 5 o'clock, because I'm kind of watching Shoreline Brewery next door.
It's so busy at Shoreline. They have like an hour wait.
Yeah, it's scary to me. So we, just so you know, we're more, more, taking more precautions. We're, we're more cautious than that. We don't feel that we would want to put people at risk. So on the opening day, what we're going to do, and you will get, we just wrote the press release, from 10:00 AM when we open until 8:00 at night, which normally we would stay open till 8:00. The first Friday would be 5 to 8:00. Instead, we're going to be open all day. It's an opening day, and we're asking people, even though it's free, to register through Eventbrite, because we really don't want more than our, in addition to our staff and the artists, we don't really want to have more than 20 people at a time. We just, you know, simply don't feel it would be prudent. People are asked to wear masks when they enter. I've actually just interviewed and had to hire a couple people to be greeters, kind of that stand, that are in the hallway, and will, no one, no one is allowed in without a mask. So I do want you to know that. We feel it's a good way to protect our, our community. So, you know, you're thinking of, it certainly doesn't have to be that day. We will set a different day aside. If you'd like to do a couple of different tours with groups, like if some of you want to bring your friends or spouses or whoever, we can set up, you know, groups of 10 or groups of 20, anytime during the exhibit or during that day. We expect to kind of fill, quite honestly, because we've been getting lots of calls and lots of emails, when are you going to open? And there's a lot of excitement about the exhibit. We are, both of the workshops that we were planning to offer will still be offered. The, the one workshop with the stitching is going to be offered virtually. And we're going to do, we're going to have two of them, groups of 15. So if you're interested, I'm going to show you a kit. I picked them up the other day. So you got an embroidery hoop and the fabric and embroidery thread and the needle, and it's free. And she'll lead you through, she's called Shannon Downey as Badass Cross Stitch. She has worked in the show, and she kind of leads you through putting what you want and stitching it on the, on the piece. So we are able to offer these free workshops during the event, and I think that's really nice for the community. The Scream Workshop, which I want you guys to participate in, she also was asking if she could do it virtually, but I don't want to do, I don't think that's possible, because, you know, like in my house, I, I wouldn't be able to scream at the top of my lungs, like for people who have pets or, you know, it's sort of, I felt like we could provide that space. So we'll probably do it more towards the end of August, when it's safer for, you know, a distance get-together. So I will get you the information on that as well. I know for sure Veronica Martin wanted it, and her daughter wanted to take part in that, and Fay and Christina. So, you know, it'll, I will resend, I will, you know, get you that information. I, I'm excited. You're going to see some great stuff, from 17th century engravings to lots of prints by abstract expressionist women, and Hollis Ziegler, who did, was well-known for doing this, you know, really, really bringing a lot about breast cancer research to the forefront. We have contemporary people who will be around, available. The show is diverse. And the only things we couldn't get, and we did have to change some of our, some of our plans, but the, we were supposed to borrow from the Illinois State Museum a couple of things that we were, you know, because of COVID, they're just, especially one was a textile, and it was a flag from the 19th century that was, no, it was a, an embroidered flag with all of the names of the people from the town in Illinois that fought in the Civil War. And it was the beginning of, they call it the GAR. It was like, before that, soldiers didn't get paid. So when they left their families and things, it was like, but what I really loved about it was it was like sort of the beginning of ways that women could, in a community, express their political will. And so I was very disappointed to not get that, especially because we have a more, a contemporary piece where the woman stitches on, it's not a flag, thank goodness, it's flag fabric, and she makes her own flag legions. So, actually, it's the same one who does the, so. There were a couple items I was disappointed, but you know, we're, we also have some really cool protest posters by artists. It's a variety. I mean, some of it is more about, you know, elevating the domestic world. There's a beautiful painting of a high chair that's like really like almost iconic, and just that people, you know, women is starting to honor their own world, and it's, and make art about it. So it's a little, little something for everyone.
Wow, that's exciting. I had, I really had no idea what the, what would be in the exhibit, well-behaved women, you know. I mean, I knew it was about suffrage, so, but-
Well, some of it, it's about, it's really about, like, there's another woman who does, it's about honoring women's voices and sort of how they've had to, it has a few subjects. It's not all about suffrage in one way, but it's about how they've had to work around getting their voices heard. So for instance, there's an African-American artist who does these, she calls them story, they're ceramic. They're like, I call them story pots. I think she actually calls them story cans. But they, they honor her ancestors, you know. So it's about female spirituality and sort of the story being passed down, because our history wasn't written down. And it, yeah, it's a variety. It's not, you know, it, I think there's a lot of points of interest. We will have the Scream Portrait, so actually, there's an image that, the gallery item. This black woman screaming, and I was like, that's a, that's an image for the ages now, right? It's a timely image. So, yeah, I think it's exciting. And we're happy to give you guys, you know, we are going to do tours. And we're happy to give you guys, you know, we are gonna do tours, not, we are gonna make virtual videos because for all the kids that aren't in school right now and can't come to the center, we want to, we're gonna have curriculum, and we're gonna have as many places that want it. We will be doing tours, both virtually, meaning the whole thing will be on video with like point, with educational points and curriculum. But there will also be a video, because we just talked about this today, we also want a video that is more just the artwork. And then, we're hoping in the fall that the schools will at least let us send like one docent to come into the classroom, show the video, and then be able to actually present like in person, because it's just more, you know, connection. So we have this here.
Sounds great, that, it is very exciting, and it sounds like it's for, yeah, you're reaching, you're trying to reach the whole city. You're reaching students and, and adults and accommodating, you know, accommodating for COVID too, so. Okay, well, I'm very excited about that, very.
Yeah, and I, I would just ask you guys, if you want, like, if there's certain dates and times, if you want to discuss it as a group, or, you know, I realize there aren't a lot of you here, but if you want to set up two tours, I mean, all I have to do is get dates and times and talk with Laura about it. So it can be half-hours, it can be, you know, if you want, if you want it to be more exclusive to you, if you want to make it, you know, if somebody walks in, they can, they can tag along. If there aren't, if there aren't any of you, that's fine. You'll just have to let me know, but we will, we will do as many tours as you want.
Okay. Yeah, our next meeting is July 16th, and maybe we can figure out a date then to be, to have the tour in August during, you know, Women's Equality Day month, so closer to that, so. But we'll see what, what everybody wants and, and I hope that a lot of people, a lot of our commissioners can attend the opening day reception at some time during the day too.
I hope so too, and I think it's gonna be put up really soon on Eventbrite, so.
Okay.
It's Eventbrite, oh, just so you know. Wellbehavedwomen eventbrite.com. I haven't gone on it yet, so it may not be live yet, I don't know. But if there's a time slot, you know, that you want to fill in for that. And then, just so you know, we're closed on the 4th, and then we'll be back open, so.
Okay, and then can we also reach that through the website, through your website?
Yes, I don't know if it's up yet, but yes, you will be able to.
Okay.
Just because we're all, I'm not kidding, we're all, we're working harder than we've ever worked. I'm like, I thought I was gonna get to organize my closets this, like, the last few months. It's like, what?
Well, maybe it's good that it got delayed a month then.
Yeah, I mean, no, I mean, it's just because, you know, with COVID is a lot, you know, that work for, you know, we're applying for everything, now we're, now we're applying for the forgiveness, and then we decided to kind of open up our front desk reception area because we're crazy and so. I mean, I don't know, it's, and then we had all these videos to shoot, but it's, it's. I didn't sit in my pajamas for three months, that's for sure, but.
Okay, well, does anyone have any questions for Janet before she takes off? Okay, well, this is very exciting, and we're very happy that you're doing this and that we have a part in it. So we will definitely get hold of you about it and promote it to our friends and families.
I think now I have all your emails too, because you're, you just sent me the Zoom link. But if you want, if like people want me to get them a stack, just don't know all the places you want to put them, and then, I'm gonna let you guys know when, you know, I think what she wants to do is to do an after, is to do an afternoon workshop, and then maybe like an early evening workshop. So if you, you know, I want to give you guys priority.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So I want to know, and I'll, I might like even just filter it to you, Bonnie, and kind of, I don't know, however it works best, whatever you guys want, but.
Yeah, send it to me. But when is the embroidery workshop going to be? Even if it's, I mean, whether it's virtual or not, what are you thinking of?
Yeah, originally it was set, I think it was for the 9th. It was a Thursday. You know what, I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me. But, but I'm gonna, because.
Is it in July or August?
July, sorry, yeah, that one's in July, because it's virtual, so.
Yeah. Then that one, that's something I do, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think the Scream one, we, I just feel like we have to really do it in person to make it, you know, I think part of it is that you know, you get to sort of know the other people in the workshop and kind of combine, you know, kind of like generate some energy around using your voice to protect yourself, to. So, we'll see.
Yes, okay.
Everyone here thinks I'm nuts, I'm like, oh, I'm gonna scream.
You are very excited about the Scream Workshop, Janet.
I am.
And some of our commissioners too, so.
Yeah, it's kind of, everyone's kind of due for one.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, you very much for talking to us tonight and sharing all of this with us, so. And we look forward to seeing you definitely in person in July.
Thanks so much, I'll sign on.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
I miss you all.
Bye-bye. Okay, oh, that was good. Janet came to the Women's Commission, for those of you who weren't around at that time. Anyway, Janet approached the Women's Commission more than a year ago, asking if we would be one of the sponsors for it. So we've known for a year and a half about this coming, and so, and they did give us some prominent, you know, acknowledgement on that postcard, the postcard is, is fun. I'll try to get some of those to hand out. Well, I don't know when I'll see any of you, but anyway. We'll try to get that out and promote this, so. Okay, well, we only have a couple more things then to talk about. One is the Preserving Women's Legacy Grant from Indiana Humanities that will, if it's awarded, it will pay for a sculpture or a mural or something to, to honor Naomi Anderson, the suffragist who was born here in 1843. And so the grant was submitted earlier this week, and I am proud to say we were able to meet the $40,000 match for it. That included a lot of in-kind, but, but we made the match, met the match, and I was really concerned about that. So we should know by the, by the end of July whether or not the, we get that grant. The grant is, would be awarded to the Michigan City Main Street Association. They were the only entity that was allowed to apply for it from the city, so. And we have the poetry contest about Naomi Anderson, or inspired by Naomi. We have that on hold. I was going to announce it, you know, during Women's History Month to Michigan City area schools, and then of course that all got, got stopped. So, so hopefully in the fall, and the, if it's to coincide a little bit with the Preserving Women's Legacy, if we do receive that grant, that grant has, they have 17 months to do that. The grant, the actual artwork will be unveiled in fall of 2021. So kind of anytime before then, if we do the poetry contest, I think will work. But the sooner the better, I want to do it to get information out there. And, let's see, and then.
Question, who is doing the mural? Who is commissioned for the mural or the sculpture?
We don't have the, we don't have the person chosen yet, but we do, but we did, we are going to, well, we put into the grant that we will hire Laura Fosberg, who is an art manager, and she'll conduct the entire artist selection process. It has to be in accordance with the Public Art Committee process for that. And so we had to, we didn't have time to do it in time for the grant, so. So we have a timetable written out, you know, exactly what dates everything will happen on. We are, yeah, so, so we are looking at art sculptors and mosaic artists and muralists. I can't hear whoever is talking, it's kind of a little bit. I'm sorry, the sound is kind of messed up there. Who is talking?
Not sure if they're talking to us.
Okay, okay. Well, and then the, the very last thing that I wanted to mention, we're supposed to give a, an annual report to the city council meeting in March every year, and of course we couldn't, so. And it says in the ordinance, I think it says that it can be in writing or, or presented orally. So anyway, Dahlia was working on that, and I'm willing to present it whenever they can get it in, you know, whenever that's, that's able to be presented.
They're backlog too, then, with.
Yeah, yeah, so this can hold, you know, we can hold off on this, but, but I didn't forget about it. I want you to know that, so. Okay, did anyone have any comments? Do any of the commissioners have any comments or questions or other issues to discuss? New business or old business? No, nobody?
I, I was just going to say, I, I think that we have lots of possibilities. Certainly, things that we can either refer to that we had planned in the past, things that we know are coming up. It's very difficult to make plans, though. I think we, you know, the first, the first important aspect is to keep everybody safe. And, and we'll go from there. But I don't think we'll run out of ideas, I really don't. Like we have lots of things planned, lots of potential.
Yep, yep, so.
Do you know who our council liaison is now?
It's still Sean.
Still Sean?
Okay. And he's the city council president this year too, but he's still, still our liaison. Okay, any, does anyone have anything else they want to bring up? This, well, our next meeting will be July 16th, and we are allowed to meet in person. It will be at Memorial Park at Krieger Memorial Hall. And so we'll send out information about that, but we'll get to see each other in person in a huge hall that's big enough for a few hundred people. So we'll be able to spread out the eight of us, eight or nine of us, so. So I look forward to seeing you there. And anything else to, that you want to talk about before we adjourn?
No, I don't think so, thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, and all those that approve that, please say aye. Aye. Okay, thank you all, thank you all for, for attending this. Yes, and I'm glad we had a quorum.